Okay, good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October 15th. I am County Board Chair Sean Flowerday. With me is Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioners Matt Schulte, Roma Amundson, and Kristi Yocum. Please rise and join me for the pleasure of being here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk?
Copy of Nebraska's Open Meeting Act is located at the wall at the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster.ine.gov. Reading options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on October 8th, 2024?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, claims, two A is the approval of the claims processed through October 11th, 2024?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B is approval for claims, including the billings for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided in Nebraska law by statute 23-135. They are for Fort Western Stores dated October 14th for a total of $2,590.43 and J.S. Worm Associates dated October 14th, 2024 for a total of $319.50.
Move approval of item B, one and two?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three. Item three is the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts, C-18-0157 with Wellpath LLC to adjust staffing and compensation provisions, C-20-0749 with EnviroTech Services Incorporated for corrosion-inhibited liquid magnesium chloride, C-21-0768 with CenterPoint for the Youth Mental Health Diversion Program, B, a right-of-way contract with Lane L, excuse me, Lane N Elsie, revocable trust, Southwest 58th Street and West Olive Creek Road in the amount of $280, utility permit 2571 with Lincoln Transportation and Utilities for installation of water transmission mains, D, a grant contract with KBC Behavioral Healthcare Nebraska Incorporated for the In-Home Family Therapy Program in the amount of $12,845, and then E is receive and place and file the following quarterly reports from the county sheriff and county attorney.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four is new business, four A, amendments to the county board resolution R22-0007, which authorizes the county board chair to sign county contract C-22-0062 with Felsberg Holton Ulvic for preliminary engineering services.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four B, resolution in the matter of authorizing the county board chair to sign environmental professional services agreement supplement two, which amends county contract C-22-0249 with Felsberg Holton Ulvic.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For C, a professional services agreement supplement two, Jimins County Contract C-22-0249 with Felsberg Holton Ulvic for additional work as outlined in exhibit A and B. The total cost to this supplemental agreement is not to exceed $7,846.77.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For D, resolution in the matter of authorizing the county board chair to sign professional services agreement supplement one for right-of-way phasing services, which amends county contract C-24-0258 with the Nebraska Department of Transportation.
Pam Dingman, this is an additional change order for our environmental certifications for the Saltillo Road project.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For E, a professional services agreement supplement one for the right-of-way phasing services, which amends county contract C-24-0258 with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for additional work as outlined in exhibit A. The total cost of supplemental agreement is not to exceed $10,452.64.
This is additional work that is required for the Saltillo Road project in order to acquire right-of-way.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For F, appointment of Carrie Kernan as Health Director for the Lincoln-Lancaster County Health Department.
Come on down, let's play our game.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chair Flowerday, rest of the county board. My name is Riley Slezak. I'm with the mayor's office team here to introduce Carrie Kernan as our nominee for the new director of the Lincoln-Lancaster County Health Department. Carrie's been with the Health Department since October of 2021 and has been the Assistant Director since May of 2023. She brings a wealth of experience in public health administration, and I believe that our Chief of Staff TJ McDowell has previously sent you her resume, which details her extensive qualifications and her track record of leadership in the public health sector. We are confident that she will serve our community members well in this role, and as you know, Health Director position must be confirmed by the county board, Lincoln City Council, and the Board of Health. The Board of Health voted, I believe, October 8th, 7-0 for Carrie's nomination. The council will hold their public hearing and a vote on October 21st. Pleased to join you all, have a chance to let Carrie introduce herself, tell you more about herself, and answer any questions you may have. And with that, I'll turn it over to Carrie.
Thanks, Riley. I appreciate it. Good morning, everyone. As Riley mentioned, and I know TJ has shared my resume, I've been in the public health realm for the last 25 years in the administrative role in a number of different positions and responsibilities held over the last 14 years. This will be my third local public health department serving communities, and I'm excited for the opportunity and happy to answer any questions.
I don't think I have any questions. Your qualifications are impeccable, and it's been a pleasure working with you the last few years since you joined our Health Department. So, thank you for stepping up and being willing to lead here.
I appreciated you coming before us last week, so everyone got a chance to meet you. But as I said last week, I've had the opportunity to interact and work with you, and really appreciate you taking on this role, and certainly do approve of this.
I am confident that you will lead the Health Department forward in a great way. Thank you. I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
First of all, I want to applaud you, Ms. Kernan, for your resume. As you know, you and I had the chance to sit down one-on-one and have a pretty direct conversation about some things. So, we talked for everything about, from everything about everything, from your leadership stance to COVID lockdowns, environmental health, and even abortion, all important medical things that are health, things that are happening in our environment, in our culture right now. Today, I'm going to vote yes on your appointment. I think Ms. Kernan represents an opportunity to lead the department well, strong, with some good experience. I also believe that she will bring some slight variation to what has been happening at the Health Department, a direction that will listen to rural communities during COVID lockdowns. Many of the rural communities in Lancaster County were very upset and felt like the mayor was weaponizing the department, and they had no chance to vote on the mayor. And so, I applaud your interest in listening to rural communities. And so, I feel like you have the chance and you have the opportunity to take us in a slightly different direction while continuing to be strong in the areas that are your strengths. So, I want to encourage you to keep that up, and I do intend to vote yes to support you today.
Thank you.
That's great. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Allegiance.
Thank you.
Next item is item four G, a release of lease between Lancaster County and Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders County in a lease agreement dated December 28th, 2010.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Heather Lockman. I am the Chief Executive Officer at Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders Counties. We're an anti-poverty organization that serves over 17,000 people across Lancaster and Saunders Counties each year. Our programs range from early childhood education to homelessness prevention, financial and family well-being, and hunger relief and healthy food access. Before you today is the consideration of a release of a lease for our 210 O Street location, which is on West O. We opened that and built that facility in 2000, and we've been paying on it for the past, I guess, 24, 25 years now. And this release of obligation will save our programs approximately $13,000 a month, which will be huge in our ability to keep up with the need that exists in our communities now and in the future. So, I thank you and happy to answer any questions you may have.
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four H is a quitclaim deed with Community Action Partnership of Lincoln and Saunders Counties related to property generally located at 210 O Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For I is a letter of intent to negotiate a lease agreement with the Nebraska Department of Administrative Services for building space at the Lancaster County Youth Services Center, 1200 Radcliffe Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Peterson, Director of Facilities and Property. This is exactly what it says. It expresses our intent to work with the state of Nebraska, our current tenant out of the WRTC, to negotiate a long-term lease that would incorporate some of the findings and recommendations of the facility study that we're going to commence soon. It also lists the actual lease rates for the two years. So, it's basically a two-year extension of where we're at now until we have time to determine our long-term needs.
When does our current lease end? Does it end?
In a couple of days.
Okay.
They have options, but it's, I think, the day before Halloween, yes.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, this is a big issue that actually reflects a lot of things that are going on in the larger community at this time, in that Brad Alexander, our director, has come to us, and he could probably explain this better, why this is important, if he's ready to come up. Mr. Alexander, we're just on...
Run your item.
We're just talking about the intent to negotiate with the Nebraska Department of Administrative Services relating the use of your facility, and just talking about what got us here to this point, some of the needs that you've expressed to us. I wondered if you'd be...
Yeah, they're twofold. You've heard it all before, but yeah, we need more living units to properly classify the kids, provide some level of separation. And then, the other effort is to, when I say improve lines of sight, it's actually to make the lines of sight worse for the kids and better for us. And so, those are our two goals.
Yeah, we've agreed to partner with the state for the use of some of the space in our facility, because they have some very dramatic needs as well, and it was, it's been a good fit for them and us. However, because of the changes that we're seeing, you've talked about long-term residents out there, which is kind of a change from what we used to have. Lot of youth are being charged as adults.
Yes.
That's resulting in longer stays, and then, some of them cannot be in the same space at the same time. Therefore, it creates some really difficult situations to work through, so...
Very well put, yes.
Thank you. I'm trying to be as smart as you are here, Brad. It scares me to death, but... So, the bottom line is, we want to be a good partner with the state. We recognize the value of what they're doing. We have, we want to live up to our responsibilities in providing the right kind of facility. I just think it's important that we get this out in front of everybody, all the dynamics that you're dealing, you and your staff are dealing with.
I appreciate that.
So, do we have a motion on this? We do, I believe.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
May I just say one more thing?
Absolutely.
I don't know where we're at with the negotiations, but one of the things, and it's neither our fault or their fault, it's just a little bit of clarity, I think, would be helpful in the contract to identify, I think they're called shared spaces, and some of them aren't really shared that much. The Life Skills Room would certainly be of value to us, and we have a difficult time getting in there. Education's got some really, really good ideas as to how to use that, and I think it would be really beneficial for our kids. And so, I would like to see if we couldn't clarify that, and then, the gym is the other area that's a shared space as well.
Absolutely.
I think we can absolutely have those conversations. Motion and second. Any further discussion?
I'd just say, keep us apprised of anything that we need to know, Brad. You know, we value your input.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For J is an agreement to lease agreement between the Nebraska Department of Administrative Services in Lancaster County for the county to provide building space for the Department of Health and Human Services, to make available residential programs and treatment of services for youth committed or placed with DHHS Office of Juvenile Services. The amendment extends the original lease term to October 28th, 2026.
Karen Peterson, Director of Facilities and Properties, this is just kind of memorializing what we laid out in the letter of intent, a two-year extension commencing this October 29th and ending October 28th of 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Hearing discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, I have a note. We're holding item 4K, so that'll bring this to item 4L, the collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 29. Term of the agreement is August 22nd, 2024 to August 31st, 2026.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Important, important services are provided by this group, and we are really happy that we've been able to reach a two-year agreement to compensate them in the way that hopefully meets everyone's needs for the community.
Yeah, I'm really pleased we landed here. Okay. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four M, a grant contract with the Star City Optimist Youth Foundation, an amount not to exceed $96,000 from the Visitors Improvement Fund.
I'm going to move approval of this, and then, I'll comment on it.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, we went through a very thorough vetting process, as you recall, and we have seen some of those come forward. This is another one that the Optimist Group has done a great job of putting these fields together, and this allows them to do some completions and additions that are going to make the facility just that much more attractive for youth. It's really a supportive work they're doing out there.
Rick, which, what address is this? I guess...
Good question. It's on the west side and a little bit south. I think you can see it from Highway 77.
Yeah, I know the facility then. The fields are really nice. They can use the better signage to get into it, and a few improvements.
There you go.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For N, a SEDAR's displacement, excuse me, a SEDAR's deposit placement agreement, custodial agreement, and addendum with Pinnacle Bank.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. For O, a rental agreement with unique event rentals for temporary Election Day furniture. Cost of the county is not to exceed $233.75.
Good morning, Commissioners. Todd Wilchin, the Lancaster County Election Commissioner. What you have before you today is the agreement with unique rentals. We're very grateful for all the polling places that we have in Lancaster County. Unfortunately, there are three that need additional equipment to host a polling place on Election Day, and that's what you've got before you.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to item five, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak in items related to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to one appearance of up to five minutes. That time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the chair.
Robert Borr, I gave you back your 10 seconds last week, thirty-fold. My remarks today should be well under five minutes, because it is obvious you can't handle the truth for that long. Excuse me. Thank you for confirming once again that you don't believe in Lady Liberty or equality before the law, or the pledge you take every week, or the oath you took. This morning, I offer this quote, blessed is the man that walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly. A little side note to this quote before I proceed, the counsel of the ungodly would include counsel from the likes of people like Robert Evanin, Wayne Benner, Gaylor Baird, Mark Zuckerberg, Mike McCarthy, and Chris Wallashan of ESNS. Of course, anyone who walks in their ungodly counsel becomes ungodly themselves. Backing up to the full quote this time, blessed is the man that walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor sitteth in the seat of the scornful, but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law does he meditate day and night. And he shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water that bringeth forth his fruit in his season. His leaf also shall not wither, and whatsoever he doeth shall prosper. The ungodly are not so, but are like the chaff. Do you have your time? Time going?
I'm keeping it. You're fine.
Okay. The ungodly are not so, but are like the chaff which the wind driveth away. Therefore, the ungodly shall not stand in the judgment, nor sinners in the congregation of the righteous. For the Lord knoweth the way of the righteous, but the way of the ungodly shall perish. End of quote. Here's the all-important application. All elections take place at the county level. If and when Democrat, Democrats pounce, as they are threatening to do because they won't accept a certain election outcome, the blood and destruction will be upon your hands. Because you allowed the counsel of the ungod, excuse me, because you followed the counsel because you followed the counsel of the ungodly and refused to fight, per your oath, for the public-facing election transparency and verifiability that is vital to the peaceful transfer of power.
Any other members? Yeah, you're fine. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning. I'm Dwayne Ralphers. I think the previous speaker had a good, good statement. I mean, are you guys trees planted by the water? Or are you trees planted in a desert area? Are we looking into what the truth is for our elections and the things that are going on with the elections? Are you interested at all what's going on? Even in the new area of inserting cameras at the libraries and looking to see, you know, what type of quality in nighttime, daytime, whenever those cameras are shooting the film? And then, who's reviewing them? Do you actually know who's reviewing the films? Or is this just a smokescreen to say the things going on are legitimate with our elections and everything is okay, because that's what you're being told? I think we need to take a look, take a look and see, honestly, are you doing what needs to be done? Or are we just sitting in the seat, occupying it, and keeping it warm? I think we need some action taken. I don't think we need to be passive in this operation. I think we have an election division that needs to be reviewed. I think we need to see what accuracy there is with the data, with the polling. There needs to be a verification of the ballots that come in. I mean, a total hand count and verifying that there are not fraudulent ballots that are entered in, whether you see the copied, you know, one ballot's copied from another ballot, like this sounds like it's going on in other states. I don't think we're exempt from fraud going on. I think we need to open our eyes via tree planted by the water. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? No other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay. Mr. Clerk, please continue.
Item 6 is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing regarding the one- and six-year road and bridge improvement program on Tuesday, October 15th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October 17th, 2024, at 8:30 AM in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, at 9:00 AM in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LNK TV. LNK TV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LNK TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item 7 is adjournment.
We adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Uh, yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We will now convene the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
Copy of Nebraska's Open Meeting Act is located at the wall at the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Item 1 is minutes, the approval of the minutes from the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024.
Approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 2 is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
I have approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
That mean, yes?
Yes, Yocum. Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3 is the certification of the 2024-2025 tax levies.
Move approval.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? How long it actually takes to do a budget. We start at the end of, we have our first hearing, like, first week of April usually, and here we are, you know, middle of October. It's the last kind of real action on it, so... Okay, motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4 is our public hearing for the following motor vehicle tax exemption applications for the Clyde Malone Community Center and Northern Lighthouse Church.
I will open the public hearings on motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Would anyone like to speak on them? Anyone wishes to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Item 5 is the public hearing action items for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 6 is public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items related to county board of equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is allowed, limited to one appearance of up to five minutes, and that time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be reasonably extended or decreased at the discretion of the chair.
Okay. Any members of the public wishing to speak? Take it away.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Carla Waldbaum. I am a Realtor here in Lincoln. Recently, celebrated my 22nd anniversary as a Realtor here this month in October. I wanted to share with you some information about a, one of my clients who is doing a, well, protesting his tax value, and we have an update on that. It is for 2500 South 9th Street. What I handed out to everybody is what the taxpayer received from Turk stating that they will be appealing. It's the official appeal form saying that the value set by the Lancaster County Board of Equalization is less than market value and unreasonable. What I wanted to bring to this board's attention, which I'm sure you're fully aware, is that it was actually the Lancaster County Assessor's Office that set this value and gave it to you for you to approve. And so, I guess what I wanted to update you on is that, as you know, they are appealing their own, their own recommendation of value. And I guess as a Realtor, it doesn't make sense to me that, well, I guess not even as a Realtor, as a taxpayer, as a person, it just doesn't make sense that the county assessor is spending this time trying to get their own recommendation changed. So, I just wanted to update everybody on that and see if anybody had any questions? Are we allowed to do questions in this one?
Public comment really isn't supposed to be a back and forth. It's the public's opportunity to talk to the board. If you want to stick around afterwards, commissioners might be willing to, you know...
Okay, there is, I did want to make sure that it's what kind of record we have here. I did, we did have a Turk hearing for the 2023 taxes, and we have not received anything on that yet. But after that meeting, while we were still at Turk in front of the Lancaster County Attorney, I said to Brett Smith, I said, can I show you the pictures of the, like, can I show you the condition of the house?